Hey, good evening to... Well, it's great. Chief, Chief Williams. Assistant Chief, thank you guys for the hosting. Director Trillian, Mr. Tiffany Harry, thank you for being here. And Lynn Slavas is going to be coming in and he'll just be able to do so much he can. But I want to tell you, thank you for being here, speaking to us. So, look, I think Beaufort County is getting very familiar with the town hall. It looks like the attendance here represents that we're getting out in the community a whole lot better than I anticipated we would by October. But it looks like we're getting out, the message is out that we're coming to responding to calls. We're showing up in the public, we're going to venues to meet the public, we're going to parades. We're coming to Aurora Richlands area. We've been to Delphine, Bath. We have been all over this county in town hall meetings, giving the citizens opportunity to speak. And it's a great thing to know in our 11th month that we're bringing the excellence of jobs. So, we don't have a lot of ill conversations here. But I want to tell everyone, thank you. Our chapter is not here to say the blessing or say our prayers. So, we would just wish you were here and we would move along with our program. Well, I'm Sheriff Harris, Beaufort County Sheriff. And we have come together as a command staff and sheriff every month and give everyone the opportunity to speak. And some of these meetings have been very proactive and have been very successful. So, the takeaways from the town halls is just to allow the information to come from the people to the sheriff's office. Hey, good evening. And one more to the audience, we are streaming live on Facebook Live. So, that's the reason I'm carrying on at a period of hold on that I want Facebook Live and the audience to know they can send questions up. They can ask those questions for our moderator. And if you have that, go ahead and send them now. And we appreciate it and we'll interact those questions into our conversations and our introductions. But this time, I'm going to introduce and allow Lynn to actually speak and introduce themselves, but our command staff of each of our divisions. And at this time, Chief Hickman, if you'll introduce yourself.
My name is Tim Hickman. I'm the Chief Deputy of the Sheriff's Office. I handle day-to-day operations of the entire Sheriff's Office. Currently, there are a lot of 97 employees within the county commissioners fund. We, at this time, I think we have 15 vacancies. So, if you know anybody who's looking for a job, we are hiring. But see, the folks at the family, they're all division supervisors. Some civilians, some sworn captains over divisions are sworn supervisors. Our representatives are over communications and administrative services. So, as we go through each one of them, we'll go into more detail about what their divisions do and the specifics of what their division handles. At the end, we'll hand any questions that you may have for each other. And again, we appreciate you coming.
All right, very good. I'd like to introduce our guest tonight. County, it's not our guest, it's the county commissioner. Red Holtz, thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it. Uh, sir, we are on Facebook Live and so we appreciate the, any questions or involvement from each other. And I believe right really in the appropriate time for Ms. Harry. If you'd like, either stand in place or come forward. And that way, we can feel free to get up and introduce something.
So, my name is Tiffany Harry. I'm a community leader for Trillion Health Resources. Thank you all for having me tonight. Um, I think these meetings are really great because working in the mental health field, um, you know, we really, we have the options. And so, just being able to have the option of coming to these meetings tonight and, you know, a good part of just showing up. So, I appreciate you showing up from the community and just getting everyone together and, and being able to share resources with you. So, Trillion Health Resources is a well-managed care organization. We cover 28 counties in eastern North Carolina. And we essentially handle all of the Medicaid state funds and county funds for Beaufort County. So, anyone that you know in your community that is in need of Medicaid services and they have mental health, substance use, or intellectual developmental disability, they can reach out to us. We can assess them for eligibility and services. We also get a lot of county dollars and we do try to give back to the community with those county dollars that we receive. Um, if you are, you know, I'm not familiar, but the park across, um, it's a Trillion Park that we built a few years ago across from that border jacks. If you all are familiar.
Thank you, Ms. Harry.
Thank you. That was, um, that was some, some money that was saved that we were able to put back in the community. Another way that we give back to the community is through crisis intervention training. Uh, we had one in Beaufort County, I believe, over the summer. And, um, we were able to do that, so 40-hour training where we're able to teach law enforcement and other press responders how to identify the signs and symptoms of mental health, substance use, or intellectual developmental disability. How to de-escalate situations and link mental services in the community, including the mobile crisis team, which I know this county implements when possible too. So, um, I have some business cards at Pamplin's back there at Al Trillium. Again, if you know anyone who needs any of these services, feel free to reach out to that, access the care line. And my business card is back there as well with my email address, so, and don't cut me off.
Very nice, thanks, Ms. Harry. Ms. Slavas? Hi there. Thank you for being here tonight, representing the daughters of work. And we'd like you to speak on your program.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. So, I'm Lynn Slavas, the founder. And the daughters of work, we are a nonprofit organization that provides trauma and work comprehensive services for girls and women in all ages who are victims of violence, specifically human trafficking and domestic violence. Um, that's, uh, human trafficking is our area of expertise. Um, when we do this work, it's through violence prevention, education. Um, we're currently serving under five-year-olds, elementarys, high school, and hip, both for animal killings. Um, we have facilitators who are trained, giving them provided trauma sessions. We're teaching the girls about women, their self-worth, value of their values, investing in healthy relationships, trafficking prevention, substance use prevention, red flags of dating violence, and all the pieces of that. As far as our mental services go, we get a lot of phone calls from girls, women, um, who are currently in spaces where they are being trafficked. And I'm going to give my slip box two seconds on this because I know that we have a lot of media. We have a lot of messaging that goes out with an image of like the white man shows up at Target, Urban Market, snatches and kidnaps kids or women. And while that can take place, that's not typically how we see trafficking taking place. A trafficking is typically taking place in a space where parents, guardians, or trusted loved ones are actually selling their kids out for rent, utilities, drugs, cash, etc. Um, or they're either being solicited from a space where they are from social media platforms, TikTok, Snapchat, things of that nature. They're building relationships with someone on the other side of that. Who is then soliciting, and so I think that is about full space of how that works. Um, so, we're working to prevent that, but we're also working to provide direct trauma-informed services for survivors. That looks like everything from getting a phone call, from being able to work directly when they think of when she is wanting to get out. So, helping her with her safety exit plan, helping her in a safe, three-location, and actually getting her out from that location. And we do documentation recovery and a lot of times, girls and women have lost their IDs. So, we also say this can also happen to boys, especially girls and women because that's the population that we are currently serving. Uh, that's our organizational focus, but it does happen to boys as well. So, we help them get back their IDs, birth certificates, social security cards, all things of that nature. We do advocacy, we give CNN checks. We also have a trauma-informed clinical psychologist whose specialty is in serving survivors. And so, that service is also provided completely free of charge along with the emergency services. So, everything that she's going to need for a medical care, to food, clothing, hygiene items, baby care items, if she has a child with her. And we're also part of a national trafficking shelter alliance, which allows us to work with agencies throughout the entire country to make sure that we can relocate her to a safe location. We cover the cost of all of that for her to make certain that she gets the services that she needs. And then, we also have a daytime drop-in center that is available, that is in Hick County. Um, that's available for her to use, bring looks, to get food, hygiene items, and things of that nature as well. Um, as far as outreach goes, we are currently serving the Hick County Detention Center. And we go and work with the women who are incarcerated. There is a strong connection between women who are being trafficked and drugs and gangs and, of course, poverty. So, we're going in, we're doing assessments from that space to reduce some trafficking screens, to assess which women are, have screened in, and to do what to reduce recidivism and being able to connect them with resources. They're not having to go back to their pills. A lot of times, these girls and women are holding charges because of the pills. And they're the ones who are helping them out. So, it's our goal to bridge that connection, to come into a relationship with them, to screen them, and to give them the option out so they can get out of all the streets and out of their life. So, that's a little bit of who we are and what we're doing. Uh, we provide services completely free of charge. So, if you notice someone or you see someone that you feel like isn't even helped, um, I've got cars with me, so you feel free to reach out to me directly. Um, but also here is going to also increase the partnership that we have at Beaufort County. I would love to begin to work in detention center, being able to serve better. And to continue as an organization to make sure that everybody, you know, is serviced. Thank you for your time.
Very nice, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Slavas. In terms of your speech, I can tell you you're passionate about your program. And just to share, Beaufort County Sheriff's Office, and I'll spend this to stay in our program called Peace of Hearts. When we have abused yet in the adult or the elderly and the children because they were trafficked, this is it. When we had that program, we came with an admission also to combat so much abuse of the children and elderly. And the human trafficking came relative much later for me, knowing how prevalent it is. So, Lieutenant Shapford would be a point of contact for the program. Y'all made contact and that partnership will blend with our, with our work effort, okay? Thank you both for being here tonight, to be honest. At this time, I'm third in command of the Sheriff's Office. The reason we have such a, it's not a comprehensive chain command, but it's a 24-hour operation, seven days a week, 365 days, that must carry the same level of excellence, whether it be the first 10 hours or the 30th or 40th hour. And all that comes with the command staff that must know their work and interact with the community. These town halls really connect us to how we can, how we can best serve Beaufort County. And by getting our command staff out, meeting the public, letting y'all have y'all's conversation with us. So, again, if you're watching on Facebook Live, I ask you to send that question up and let's get as much involvement, but let us answer your questions, okay? Major Dooley, would you like to introduce yourself? And if you don't mind, so we don't scratch the floors up in this beautiful property, to the staff, you do not have to stand up and do any of it. But this is a beautiful job.
I'm Jeremy Dooley. I'm the major with the Sheriff's Office and the Sheriff said I'm third in command. Some of the stuff that I am tasked with with the Sheriff's Office is I'm over the Sheriff's Office operations when it comes to like presentations, like community events where we interact with the community, such as National Night Out. If y'all went to the Summer Festival this past year, it was the first time you, you would have seen the Sheriff's Office there participating because the sheriff wanted us to be out there in the community, be able to interact with the citizens that we serve. Uh, so, I oversee those operations and the scheduling of those events to make sure that we have staff present at those locations. Um, I'm over professional standards, meaning the policies and procedures that the Sheriff's Office operates under. Uh, the sheriff came in and identified the, the need to upgrade and update our policies. Uh, those policies that were missing, that needed to be implemented, and some that just needed to be tweaked. Uh, so, we are working diligently on that. Uh, we've implemented Power EMS, which is an online-based policy server that we can upload everything to and the officers, the detention and communication staff can all log in, they can review their policies, and they sign off on each policy, which gives us continuity and accountability if somebody is not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Additionally, as a part of this Power EMS, we are working for NCLEAN, North Carolina Law Enforcement Accreditation Network, to get certified, accredited with North Carolina, which means that somebody else other than us will look at our policies and say that they're a little more than what they should be and that we're operating professionally, which is literally their mission statement is to keep everybody more professional in law enforcement. Others have ever seen Lieutenant David Richards, uh, he's from this area or has lived in this area, so maybe you might be familiar with him. Uh, he is our Community Watch Coordinator. And one of the things he's doing is going out and he is implementing new Community Watch programs. Aurora has a very good watch group and they kind of extend out of the town of Aurora into the rural areas of county. But we're still seeking to stand up neighborhoods, find links to contact. We want to have every neighborhood in Beaufort County represented by a watch group so that if something's going on, we can reach out to you through the sheriff's side. The sheriff will talk about that later today, I'm sure. And we'll be able to communicate with those groups because if something's going on in your neighborhood, it's good for you to communicate that with your neighbors and observe and report what you see to law enforcement. You're not supposed to get out there and become a cowboy or anything like that. You're not the law in the neighborhood. But you know what's going on in community, and get more eyes on it, and report it so it helps us solve crimes, helps us find the bad guy that you're concerned about. We have a lot of good information in the back that helps you with home assessments and outstart a program. But Lieutenant David Richards will be your point of contact. If you have any questions, reach out to the Sheriff's Office. So, I'm the agency's public information officer. So, press releases, they'll go through me. And then, the follow-up questions that the media has, that I'm tasked with answering that through the command staff, because of this certain vision that this question's due, then I'll reach out to them and share the chief of guidance and the answers. Also, I'm the coordinator for Beaufort County Crime Stalkers. Uh, if you can watch Channel 7, they probably see me on TV on the recordings pretty properly. Um, and they utilize P3 tips, uh, which we have QR codes in the back. So, if you put that app on your phone, you can submit your confidential tips to that and you can get a reward for valid information on a tip that, you know, at least on arrest. So, uh, also, just on the Community Watch, we've got right now, count actual individual groups, not lumped together, around 18 groups in Beaufort County. And when the sheriff started, we had two hundred of them, it's his name. But it has been going for how many years, Sheriff? 14 years. And the other was Aurora's and they've been going for a very long time. He celebrated a milestone. So, and I appreciate you.
And these groups are actually individual communities alone. They have different community names, Shady Bayes, North Shores. So, uh, we're grateful to the communities who are educating themselves and so we don't have a, not an accident, but an incident. An informed person who takes the law in our hands, that's an incident. We want an informed person to, you know, not attach themselves to the problem, but take pictures, video, record information, be trained in how to take a description from head to toe, how to relay that information with accuracy. So, we, the law enforcement can come and actually, you know, be. So, it's really a mitigating liability within your own community. And it keeps our, it looks like they're not being aggressive to what really is no more than someone maybe walking through your neighborhood who has a flat tire or maybe legitimately looking for work to do or looking for a job that's already been created. So, maybe they're not guilty, maybe they're not in there casing your house up. But it is important that you understand the difference between the two so you can protect property at home as well. Okay? Uh, two more, right? The next person is Callie. If you don't mind, introduce yourself as our command staff.
Uh, as the sheriff said, my name is Callie. Here, I'm the Director of Administrative Services. And I help oversee or oversee the administrative offices, the civil divisions, or civil papers. The front office fingerprinting, preparation of papers before they're sent out for service. And any public interaction that the front office may have, assisting people with their concealeds, with renewal of those concealeds, or any other concerns that they may have that they want to report to the Sheriff's Office. Uh, in addition to that, I also assist the chief in managing, preparing, and managing the budget and overseeing accounts payable, any financial function that associated with the agency. Uh, the Sheriff's Office does manage the 6th November registry for Beaufort County. We currently have 133 registrants. Uh, we work tirelessly to ensure that all the registrants have the tools that they need to follow the rules and guidelines and live within the rules to ensure the safety of the community and the offenders. Uh, just a few things about the office. Our office hours are eight to five, Monday through Friday, with the exception of holidays. Other than that, the phone number is 252-946-7111. Uh, the concealed permits is a large part of what we do. And just a few things about those, it's a new permit. If you're getting a new permit, it will require for you to take a class. Once you've taken that class, you can come to the office with your fingerprinting on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 8:30 to 11:20. And you will need your certificate and ID. If you've been in the military, you can have your RPD 214. Um, and it's $90 cash. For renewals, we accept those within office hours of eight to five. You don't have to have your fingerprinting. You do need to bring your ID and it's $75 cash. Generally, it takes about 90 days to process these applications. So, once you turn it in, you're looking at about a 90-day wait. So, if you have a renewal, we do send out letters to remind you of those renewals. But if you didn't get a letter and you're about to expire, we can get it before that date so that we can help you get that renewed. So, if you're a permit holder currently and you moved from another county to our county or you're moving from our county to someone else's county, you do need to go to whoever your concealed is with. So, if you're moving to us, you need to go to that originating county and change your address. That will, they will then send your file to us and they'll keep everything current and you would be able to renew with us. If you're moving away to another county, then you can come to us and we would help you with that process. That keeps you, uh, everything current and everything correct in your file. If you're expiring and you've passed the 60-day expiration window, you will have to take that class again. Uh, if you have any questions or anything about the state's vendors or the front office or any of the permits that I've talked about, I'd like to answer those questions here at this lady.
Thank you very much. And to my left, 911 Communications Director, Mr. Van Moltweck.
I'm Victoria Van Moltweck, the Director of 911 Communications for Beaufort County. Um, a little bit about our division. We are a lot of a staff of 17. That consists of a Director, an Assistant Director, an IT Personnel, and then we have 14 telecommunicators. Um, along with the Sheriff's Office, we dispatch many other resources. Uh, we have 14 fire departments within the county that we can dispatch. We have seven EMS and rescue squads, two police departments. And then, we are the direct link to contacting the public with other resources and law enforcement with other resources such as animal control or DSS, wildlife, the Coast Guard, um, and such other people, like the Red Cross as well. Um, on a daily average, we take about 300 to 400 calls a day in our center. About 50 to 150 calls per service. Um, there's multiple ways to contact communications. Um, you can call the 946-0101 number, that is for non-emergency line. Um, and as well, everybody, you can call 911 for your emergencies. But we also have text to 911 capabilities. Um, so, you're able to actually text 911 from your cell phone and that will come with a possible location, just like it would if you had a phone call off of your cell phone. Um, I like to take this time, opportunity, to kind of just break down a 911 call to people. Um, hopefully, you've never had to call 911. Um, if you have, um, it can be for all sorts of things, not just needing law enforcement. But if you need fire or EMS, we also provide those services. We dispatch out fire, law, and EMS for Beaufort County. So, within 911 call, we're first going to ask you what your address is. That's going to be the first thing we ask you. Um, address is always first, kind of throws people off because as soon as we answer the phone, we want to go right into their story of what's going on and why they need help. We stop you right then and get your address because then, if the phone were to disconnect, we still know that help's needed at this specific address and we're going to send help, even if we don't know what type of help. We're then going to ask you your phone number. Right after that, for the same reason, if for some reason the phone was to disconnect, we at least have an address and a phone number to try and call you back up while we're getting resources on the way. Um, then we'll ask you your name and then we'll ask you, okay, tell me what happens. And sometimes I can frustrate people because they don't understand why we're not listening to them right away because there's key pieces of information available to get you the help the quickest and the fastest way possible. Um, also, during this time, if you have, if you're calling for a medical emergency, we're going to ask you questions that a lot of times the public don't understand. We're going to ask you, is anybody injured? We're going to ask you, um, what medications did they take? Are they a diabetic? Um, are they alert and breathing? Are they changing colors? Um, a lot of times, this can frustrate people because they think that these questions delay them. Um, which, in fact, while we're taking the call, our partner is already getting the resources on the way. We ask these type of questions. We ask their medical history. We ask for previous medications that they might need. We ask these questions so we can gather as much information possible to the responders that are coming to help you. So, as soon as they exit that truck, whether it be a fire truck or ambulance, as soon as they exit that vehicle, they know exactly, hopefully as much as possible, what they're headed into, what kind of help you need, what kind of resources you need. Um, so, we're just taking all that information in real time and relaying it to the ambulance, to the fire truck, to the deputy that's responding to you. We're also able to give you life-saving measures over 911. We're able to administer aspirin for chest pains. We're able to give you the instructions for the helmet maneuver. We're, we give you instructions on how to perform CPR if somebody's not breathing. We also, if you wreck your vehicle and you find yourself in a ditch or a canal or water that's entering the car, we have instructions for life-saving measures to help you safely exit that car. Um, to how to break open the window or how to get out of your seatbelt. If you call for a fire, your house is on fire or your house is blown up with smoke, we have measures that we can help you to tell you, okay, get down to this level, try and touch the door before you have to give you, try to give you safe life-saving measures to get out of that house before the responders can get there. So, it's so important, a lot of people, they're in such a rush, they want to tell us they need emergency and they want to get off the phone and go help. But really, if you stay on 911, we're just able to ask you so many questions to gather so much information that can help even more once somebody gets there. Um, also, just wanted to throw out that we get a lot of accidental calls to 911. Um, and it can be such things as a pocket dial. It's happened to me. I was on the beach with my family and my phone was in the beach bag and next thing I know, my phone was ringing and it was near County 911 calling me back to see if I had an emergency because my phone accidentally pocket dialed. Somehow, 911. Um, also, if you hit the sideline five times, you're in an emergency mode. Um, the first reaction, we see an emergency mode or that it's called 911, the first reaction is to hang up. Or if your child is playing on the phone, you gave your child a phone, they were watching a movie or playing a game, all of a sudden, they're calling 911 and you're quickly hanging up from that as well. Um, those type of calls, best thing for you to do is stay on the phone. Stay on the phone with us, let us know what happened. It was, um, just an accidental missed dial or it was an accident, your child's playing on the phone. Um, this just helps make everything go smoother. If we are, give a 911 hang-up call from you, we're going to call you back. We're going to keep calling you back. We can't get in touch with you, we're going to send resources. So, in the hopes of not having to tie up resources, just always try and either call us back, let us know what happened, or just stay on the phone. let us know what happened or just stay on the phone. Um, same thing for disconnected cell phones. A lot of people give their child or their grandchild a cell phone that does not work. It gets no longer in service. If that phone could power on, whether it has a plan or not, if you call nine-one-one, it would connect you to the nine-one-one center. So a lot of people don't know that, they give those phones for play-plays. Um, so take the battery out, do it every weekend so it doesn't power on before you do that. Um, but yeah, that's what I had, thank you sheriff for this time, thank you guys for your time.
No, that's great. And I do want to ask just a follow-up question. When they, when they do call nine-one-one, do you prefer that they stay on the line even if they are called away from the phone and they had to lay the phone down?
Right, yes sir.
Do you still prefer them to stay connected?
Right, if you have to walk away, if you have to go, if you cannot carry that phone with you, then lay the phone down, keep it on, that way we can still hear what's going on, we can still kind of keep the connection, that's still vital information that we can gather. Yes sir.
And if you're on a cellular phone out, out in a rural area, is it possible that we can locate through nine-one-one? Is it possible if they stay online, can we locate them?
As long as you're, you're at a tower and heading off a tower, we have a lot of resources where we're able to pinpoint, we even have, not only our map, but we have other resources as RAC and SOAs and, um, that we go and is able to calculate your location. So we definitely can, you can hang up the phone. So there's always a chance and opportunity to keep that phone on.
So the message, uh, and I appreciate you hitting it, is to stay online until you've actually made connections with the nine-one-one operator and allow them to obtain all the information possible until they tell you it's safe to hang up or disconnect. So, thank you. And to my right, uh, introduce to you detention center administrator Captain, Captain Satchel.
Hi, I'm Captain Satch, this is Satchel. I'm jail administrator. Um, my primary job is managing and coordinating all of the, um, duty that Beaufort County teaches here.
Bless your heart. Amen.
I work to establish, awesome and concealer of the lives of inmates and kids to ensure that rights of the inmates are afforded to respect, um, jail stand, um, facility, and facilitative policy and regulations. Help with the court decision like, um, when they go to court and they feel like their paperwork is messed up or wrong, I try to make sure that they get the right judgments and be able to go to DAC or even get relief, sometimes they do get relief because sometimes the paperwork is wrong. And I also ensure that all officers are, when they come into the facility, they are trained through the UTO program. Um, before a year's up, they go through the, um, detention officer's certificate course to make sure they're, um, real training. And as long as we're there, we got the in-service, um, training program. We got to make sure that we do it here. Also, um, we have twenty authorized positions that include me as the jail administrator, um, to assist the jail administrator and force supervisor and thirteen officers. We have shifts that which include one supervisor and one shift for three officers. The staff are responsible for operating the control room. Somebody has to be in the control room at all time. They got to monitor the surveillance cameras, answer their phone, um, open the doors and answer their radios. They're the main source of most outside of the facility is where. This, um, the staff is conducting security checks. The officers on the phone is conducting security check checks. They just do it, really they do about just about everything in the facility from, um, booking, releasing, um, even several wheel, transporting of any major, for getting them ready for court and outside of the facility. Our maximum capacity is eighty-five, our minimum, by average is around sixty. Um, we use a system called Paytail, um, Pathway to Achievement. It provides a center for learning opportunities, which include we have meditation, education training to help overcome issues that leads to their incarceration. Like they can also use the law library. Um, guarding is a, um, system they use to do security checks, um, on special watches, they do fifteen-minute checks and then document those checks to make sure that inmates are okay.
Thank you, Tony. Look, if anybody's ever had the opportunity to observe a, in the administration of the jail, it's an amazing piece of operation going on. And she was being nice because everything she was speaking of was based on what the policy procedure orchestrates. What she did say was, the mental illness that is in that jail, that she has to deal and supervise the events that occur with dignity and respect. She has to train those staff to, to, kind of like what our community, the watch teachers, our community, how to disciple one, the friend different folk, how to decipher if someone wasn't going to be attacked or be attacked by watching that internal behavior or that community that they're creating internally. Now, when I say they, we know that this is our community that we're serving inside of the Beaufort County jail. There's many of, uh, those watching on Facebook, there's many of our family members, there's many of our, uh, community members. So we take it very seriously about how they're treated and speaking of the mental health. Speaking of the ones that come in with potential medical issues, then we have to send them to the hospital to make sure they're given proper, uh, proper care. And that takes training, that takes a lot of training that, that I knew Captain Satchel didn't mention. Cleaning up, cleaning up, being a plumber. The detention officer training to be a sort of, of clean up and plumber. When she speaks about operating the water in the system, these are the negatives as to how they retaliate against being, you know, placed in a security cell. So the jail is not a, a difficult, but it's a complicated, uh, task. But I want to, I appreciate your diligence in that and your staff, I appreciate you. To my left is the patrol division captain, Captain Siders, you'll introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, uh, Captain Siders, captain of patrol, uh, patrol division. We have a total of, uh, twenty-six deputies. We provide zone coverage twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, five days a year for all of both the counties. We have an accounting divided up into four zones. We run a both zone, which is the north, northeast portion of Beaufort County and then we run the Washington, Chicago, and then the south zone, south zone would be one's created. Um, we respond to emergency and non-emergent, emergency calls in the county to include domestic violence, sexual assaults, robberies, both felony misdemeanor assaults, um, frauds, commercial and residential property crimes, any of alarm aggravations for business or residential. Uh, we handle traffic control and minor complaints. Uh, we do welfare checks and animal complaints as well. Uh, one of the things we do with the animal complaints is, uh, program that Sheriff initiated and his heart's initiative. He'll explain that a little bit more, I'm sure, in the closing. We also serve both civil and criminal processes as well as perform area neighborhood patrols, which is our ten-eighty-four program. And we also conduct business and residential checks, which is our ten-eighty-nines. Um, if you're going to be on vacation and your business will be closed for a couple of days or if you'd like a, a added security patrol to your business or your residence, um, just simply call the office, fill out a form and we'll have a deputy come by your business or residence and check it while you're out of town or unavailable. Um, another thing that the sheriff's initiated was a school bus and school and bus safety and security program, which we call our ten-nines. Uh, when school is in, we try to have deputies stop by at least to make contact with the staff members at the school, make sure that things go according to that day, see if there's anything that they may need or special activities that would involve the sheriff's office. And then also we check, um, the school buses traveling the roads and just make sure that everything is safe for those, you know, kids going to school and getting home in the afternoon. Some of the other duties that the patrol division handles are escorts for charity events and parades. We do field escorts, public speaking engagements such as school career days and job fairs. We assist both criminal investigation division and the drug unit with, um, crime scenes or any cases that they may have actively going. Um, we assist fire and rescue and any emergency scenes that they may have, uh, to include hazmat and disaster or severe weather. We are the initial response and assisting search and rescue for any lost or missing persons, be it a child or someone with Alzheimer's. Um, we also handle, um, any training and the field training or I handle training and the field training program, uh, for any of our new hires and employees as well as conducting, uh, transports of inmates, prisoners and mentally ill to and from other facilities throughout the state for either incarceration, judicial hearings or treatments. And that's about a good synopsis of what patrol does. Thank you sheriff.
That's true, thank you. To my right, special operations captain Casey Newell.
Thank you sheriff, uh, my name is Casey Newell, I'm the captain of special operations. Um, under the special operations division, uh, we oversee four specialized units. Uh, the first unit that falls under our division is the drug unit. Now, our drug unit is comprised of a group of detectives that are highly trained, highly motivated and very passionate about the job and keep dangerous drugs out of Beaufort County. The reason why I'm so passionate about the job, like myself, we all live here in Beaufort County and we raise our children here in Beaufort County. And we understand how dangerous drugs are and start from a young age. So today we did our two-hundredth case, uh, since January first in the drug unit. And in the years past, it seemed like, uh, in our area cocaine and marijuana were, um, the, the most prevalent drug. And I see this in fire and EMS folks here and I'm sure you guys see it, but right now the methanol problem is, is real big in our county. The overdoses, um, patrol communications, um, get those calls on a daily basis. So we're really aggressively trying to combat that and keep that out of our county. Uh, we work closely with the local agencies, state and federal agencies, um, utilize various investigative techniques to, uh, combat that. So it's, um, it's a big problem, Beaufort County is not an exception to the rule and we work aggressively to try to keep that out. Uh, next under the special operations division is SRT, which is the sheriff's response team. So the sheriff's response team can be utilized to deploy for, uh, any kind of high-risk situation like a hostage situation, high-risk search warrant, um, high-risk warrant service, um, barricading gun and things of that nature. So in the years past, whenever we had incident like that come up, it would be members from patrol or members from the drug unit or criminal investigation unit that would respond to these, uh, these scenes. Well, Sheriff him and solve the need for specialized training and equipment for that. So that's something I'm really excited about, to see this program come from the ground up. So now we have a group of deputies that are specially trained and continually trained, um, issued, uh, specialized equipment to respond to these types of situations so they can be resolved much more safely, not only for the suspect but for the deputies as well. Uh, next under special operations is, uh, the drone team. Our drone team consists of six deputies that have a specialized license to be able to fly and deploy the drone for, uh, natural disasters, um, use this overwatch on high-risk scenes or search and rescue. Um, if you guys saw the news, I think it was a week ago, we deployed the drone to find a wounded person that had ran into the woods. And I think it was in a matter of minutes, I think the drone used this, um, thermal imaging technology and they were finding that person very quickly. So that situation ended good, but like, uh, Captain Siders talked about, we get, we get calls all the time for somebody with Alzheimer's or dementia or a small child with a cognitive disability that may walk away from home and, you know, if it's in the middle of February and it's twenty degrees outside, being able to find that child or that person much quicker is, is very important. So we decided to have that drone at our office to be able to utilize those situations. Last under special operations is our mobile field force. Um, mobile field force consists of thirty-eight deputies that are issued right here, specialized gear to respond to civil unrest or riots or anything that may occur. And just like with the drug problem, Beaufort County is not an exception to that either. A lot of things are under our control that may happen nationally or globally, like what's happening in Nishiro right there, may spill over and cause, um, problems in multiple areas. So being able to have a group of deputies to respond to protect life on the property is incredible.
Yeah, good job. And I appreciate, the, the drone deployment can be seen on, you can go back to WIT and you can be seen on, uh, the website, sheriff's office website, under press releases. And you can download the sheriff's web app, which will link you to the sheriff's website. And you can continue to, to watch our press releases even dated back prior to January. So there is, there's a lot of local knowledge to download the sheriff's app and there'll be a QR code and what we'll do after the meeting, we'll show you how to download it if you need that help, but you can go to your iPhone, iPhone, what's it called, store, app store and download it from there, Beaufort County Sheriff's Office app. It's got the typical store, don't get confused with the Beaufort County, South Carolina, but it's Beaufort County, Mo, Carolina, and we appreciate you. There's also an option on there that's not going live yet, but there will be a notification push that when we do have a real situation, maybe a lockdown at the school, maybe a tree fell across the road, that's going to be a delayed traffic hazard, uh, water across the, maybe like a scenario at Rogers Beach, that we can give you those notification pushes and you can detour and take a proactive, uh, action there. But there's a lot of advantages when you do download the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office app and I appreciate you doing that. To my left, support services division captain Gerard, please introduce.
Like I said, I'm, I'm Michael Gerard, captain of support services. I have three areas of responsibility, one of them, the first one being court and civil operations. I have a lieutenant that oversees this daily operation. Uh, we have four belligerents, they're in court every day of the week. Set for two weeks out of the year with judges at a conference. So basically my business, they're responsible for the security in the courtroom and outside the courtroom. They're responsible making sure that inmates make it to their court dates, uh, rather than have to pick them up from our jail, very much elevator or go across the state pickup. Um, also have two civil process deputies that are assigned to the federal lieutenant. And their, their primary responsibility is civil process is more than just going knocking on a circle paper. It's, it's process that takes time such as evictions, uh, rent of property for someone that did not pay a bill to judges that's ordered us to, to seize property or money from themselves. I'm also the fleet manager for the sheriff's office. Uh, part of that job is responsible for AD units, maintenance, the purchase of the unit and the service. And including that part would be every bill and equipment the sheriff's office needs, from guns to boots to uniforms, I'm responsible for purchasing and maintaining and keeping them in our warehouse and keeping them, uh, inventory. And IT also follows under support services, we have We have two technicians to keep all our electronic equipment running and computers, body cameras, cell phones, uh, keep them up to par, make sure everything's functioning like it should. Thank you, Sheriff.
Appreciate it, Captain Gerard. And to my right, Criminal Investigation Division Lieutenant Brad Shuffler.
Thank you, Sheriff. My name is Brad Chalkford, Lieutenant and Detective Investigations. I'll serve all the captains west of the border from five additional deputies, detectives, and once a being, Deputy Custodian, make up Criminal Investigations Division. Deputy Custodian, she sees through all of the evidence that comes through us, both collect for crimes, both found property, seized property, uh, guns and ammo that are received during domestic violence protection or service. She maintains chain custody and appears to work for all of them. She also maintains the sex offender registry and works very close with all the deputies, including CID, to follow all those recent violations. Within the detective ranks, other criminal products, we take care and investigate all felony crimes, starting with murder, rape, robbery, child sex offense, sex offense, um, elder abuse, animal abuse, frauds. And it continues on and on. Uh, we typically have between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five active investigations of all times among the detectives within the division. So everybody's usually working about twenty-five cases at a time, so their workload is extremely busy. They see the case from beginning to successful conclusion, arrest, to see it, to train, to testify for grand jury, to get indictments, and then we work with the District Attorney's Office for successful prosecution. Somebody's innocent cases can maybe last a week, few weeks, sometimes six months, a year, as long as we're all involved in it. As we move forward, in today's times, the technology requirement for detectives, the forensic knowledge, there's a continued training, trying to draw their skills so we can bring one of the crimes to successful conclusion.
Very nice. Now you have a better understanding from the division. Does anyone have any questions about the individual division? Any specific questions? Okay. Anyone online at this time have any questions?
I'm sorry.
What, so typically we do have a few number of questions. But what we, uh, wanted to tell you, we have here available as the extension of our open door policy, that's what the Town Hall accomplishes. And if no, if we do not have any questions, any comments to my right? I want to tell this guy thank you so much for the job that we do to meet the needs of Boford County. What I do know is, we, Captain Gerard, he speaks about the civil process. We have got commendations from the Court, Court of Court's Office. The number of cases that we were reclaiming money back for those in Boford County, and I wanted to say that having a professional civil service team to focus on those needs is, is what's accomplished that. Thousands of dollars are in, in the making of returning it back to the lawful rightful owners of that, of that, uh, service. So I wanted to comment on that. So what Captain Sersonson, Patrol, he spoke about our ten ninety program briefly. The ten ninety is a program that we've been doing all our career, but it, to isolate it and get the statistics together so I can report to Boford County. To date, since, uh, January the ninth, was I correct? Since you started, since I, yes, uh, December fifteenth. We have made contact within our public schools and private schools, two thousand one hundred and thirty personal contacts. And that's going parking the car, stopping the car, going inside, making contact with the principal or the staff, and or, and or riding behind with the bus and doing a security check around that bus to s- to ensure that traffic that he or around is not careless or reckless or out there creates some kind of ambush or some type of disturbance for that flow of traffic. I take that very seriously and that we are, we are taking our safety, our public safety serious to, from the housing to our response time to our students. Another point I wanted to make was in the communities, just in the month of September, nine hundred and twelve business checks. So nine hundred and twelve business checks, just in the month of September. I want you to know that's working. That's, what that does do, it creates the expense of the cars being utilized for, it shows our fuel usage, it shows our hours of, um, overtime if were required. I want to tell you the minimum number of overtime we're using is because of excellent management that, that our staff is using. Uh, I want to say thank you for that, Captain Sersonson. That reduces dollars to the taxpayer, but it also increases the security. And I want to tell you, I appreciate that. All right, Chief, you got anything? The Sheriff's App and, thank you for that. The Sheriff's App again, look, that's going to be our communication from the Sheriff's Office directly to Boford County citizens. Uh, you know, our experience with social media is Facebook, Z, X, um, all the other, other types of social media. The Boford County has taken this app. Uh, we've loaded it with the public safety needs and how you can be informed through, whether it's a veteran looking for VSW, uh, location, whether looking for veterans administration, whether you're looking for animal control, that you can report through a tip. The, the, uh, app has a reporter tip, P three tips through Crime Stoppers. We partnership with them through the app. It's a one-stop shop that would have public safety needs that allow you to go in and they're vetted through our command staff, which actually is our IT personnel and Major Buick, who's the custodian of the information plug. So when it comes to you, you've been vetted through our system. Where ads going through, if I continue, if I send stuff through Facebook, you don't stand Facebook enough that it gets a, uh, a yay yay and a nay 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 and it, well, believe it or not, that still is a form of good communication, but it's always, there's always an aggregate factor to it. I want to emphasize your credibility is behind the information. And again, that's Boford County Sheriff's Office app. You go to your Apple phone, download the app, it'll do calls for you to feed, and it will, and it's also on the Android platform. The Ace of Hearts, guys, I want you to know that Ace of Hearts is a, it, we have a, a entire educational program. If you're a church, if you're a social club, a coffee club, would like to invite us to any of those videos, we'll teach and show you the principles of the cruelty, prevention and cruelty is what you're, of animals, children, and elderly. It's showing you that if you send animal right around a pig or a bull or a tree, that that's probably a law violation, such as a tether leash law. So when you are equipped with that information, it allows you to send a tip that's viable and one that we can enforce. Same way with children. If you understand there's a child who's neglected, uh, maybe spoiled, each day they go to school or come back spoiled or, uh, unkipped, it could be a problem. Send that tip in through the Boford County Sheriff's App. You can do it anonymous, same thing with your P three app. Any of those programs, we've got the vehicles of information, allow us, and it comes directly to us, and we want, we want that information, same as your elderly. And if you know a family that's pushing an elderly up in a room and now all they're doing is abusing them for their money and their prescription drugs, their opiates, and they're going back down on the street and reselling these, well, that's a crime. I want them arrested. I want them off the street because that crime is what's caused our mental illness to increase here and cause deaths in our families that are unnecessary. So I push that back here and back. Law publication is a informative information book that will break, give you a breakdown of makeup of different here, uh, whether it be meth, whether it be cocaine, football, and education that give you a breakdown and description of each. I want to tell everyone thank you again, or attended or viewed. Our views are in the twenty, mid twenties, so look around us if we have them sitting here with us. They're here virtually, and I, I'm pleased with the number of folks who have stayed online with us. I want to say thank you for those online, thank you for the ones attending, please stay back, we'll stand here and answer your questions. All right, at this time, does anyone have any comments? Far chief, anything? You got a celebration coming up soon? All right. Commissioner, any, anything you'd like to say?
Now, I think this venue, this, taking the time and effort to go out on the community and to let the community see here and understand what you are all doing is critical to your success and to the success of the citizens of Boford County in terms of reducing crime, taking personal responsibility, and I want to commend you for what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I appreciate your support. Uh, obviously, when we go before the county commissioners, being transparent and justified while we're asking a budget for is really what prompts this type of open and transparent meetings here. Uh, there's a responsibility we all have to the public. I don't have that, uh, notion that I want to put all my business out, but I do know Boford County, the citizens, what we do. And if they have a concern about why we don't respond, you know that we're coming with the motivation and the morale of, of this office. We're coming as fast and safe as possible. Yeah, so people often ask, what is our response time? It is as quick and fast as, as possible. And, and those days depend on the, the road, the conditions of the road, uh, and what's the choice. So thank you, Commissioner, for making that, that nice comment there, and, because the staff deserves that. The staff comes to work every day and they deserve, and I appreciate you. Compliment, yeah. Anything else? All right, at this time, we'll just go into, uh, info. Please stay back and eat the, kind, and there's lots of treats in the back. I want to thank you, and I don't want to mention any names, but Chief Wiggins, this is the chief, thank you, Captain Chief. Appreciate you. All right, good night.